I will order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, October the 3rd. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Doug Bohall, pastor of Honey Creek Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray together. Almighty God, we bow before you this evening with hearts and minds and voice, grateful for the dreams we enjoy in this land and in this community, grateful for the blessings that we receive so very easily. And we're thankful for the word that reminds us that these gifts don't come
Important progress.
but because of your graciousness. We thank you, Father, that these blessings sometimes come in the form of family, friends, coworkers, schoolmates. But through it all, Lord, we must learn to work together. And I pray, Lord, tonight for this meeting, that these elected representatives, that you might grant them wisdom, direction. We live in a time that is so divisive, so many personal agenda that exist. I pray, Lord, that you'll help all of us strive, elected and general public the same, just strive toward unity, that we might be able to find the greater goods and continue to enjoy the benefits and blessings of living in this community. Let it be so we pray. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
And Williams.
Here.
You do have a floor. All of you should have received copies of the minutes for our last regular meetings of September the 19th. Do I have a motion? Those from Mr. Lexi's second.
Second.
From Mr. Foster. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Thanks.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Should receive the aye next semi-monthly on the share point, and if you have questions, please let me know.
You think we're going to control it this time?
Definitely.
Any other committee or board reports?
Yes, Mr. President, we did have a regular change of meeting, the Plan Commission, last Monday, a week ago. The items that were before us and that were approved, a replant of a replant of Greenwood's self-storage property plant, a landscape waiver for African stalfing, and a parking waiver for Allen Commercial Group, that all are approved.
Alright, thank you. Any other committee or board reports?
Alright, Mr. President, I make a motion to move orders 2234 a lot of public comments about something unrelated, so.
Alright, we have an ordinance or a motion to move ordinance 2234 to the to the move forward on the agenda at the present time.
Second.
Second, on Mr. Foster, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye, I'll oppose like this. Alright, and then.
2234.
Alright. I think Mr. Hopper has one more.
Oh. Resolution, yeah, motion to walk on resolution.
And most of the talker to walk on resolution 2226 to put it at the beginning of new business.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Second, with Mr. Foster, any discussion on that? Hearing none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Alright, resolution 2226 has been walked on the beginning of new business. Alright, ordinance 2234.
An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Greenwood, Indiana, for the purpose of establishing council district sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion. Motion, Mr. Hopper.
Second.
Foster. Second, Mr. Foster. Any discussion on the council? This is the, this is the ordinance on the council redistrict.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a few comments today.
Yes.
Alright, just to make aware of my concerns, which I have reservations about this ordinance for some of the following reasons. First, to my knowledge, there's no opportunity for input from council members who are affected most by the district process, unless it is taking place in the recent process. Secondly, over the redistricting process in years past, District Four has added precincts to the west by Route 31 to the south, Pleasant County Eighth, and East Pleasant Sixth, but never jumped State Route 31, which now, of course, is Pleasant Three. Third, and most disturbing, there was or has not been any options to plan in question. I'm asked to see two other plans on this request. In other words, I've been asked to approve with only one option. Fourth, in the past, the district pick was always done at house. An opportunity for council input with public hearings. That seems to have worked well and saved thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. That being said, I have no qualms with anyone or any group of groups. Now that the above points resonate with any of the other counselors, so be it. I was meant to the will of the majority, however, I cannot support this ordinance that's presented.
It already passed. Twenty twenty-nine, twenty-two twenty-nine.
If you're online, would you please mute? Alright, any other comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2234, first reading.
Thanks.
No.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2234 passes, first reading, eight to one. Now, back to the agenda. This is an opportunity that we set aside for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. And I see there are a few people here, and I'm assuming that some of you have some comments you'd like to make concerning items on the agenda. And let me state that there is during this public comment time, a five-minute time limit per person and a total of a twenty-minute time limit for any particular topic or item that's on the agenda. And this is not like the Plan Commission where each side gets so many minutes and then there's rebuttal and, and all of that. The only opportunity the public will have to speak is at this time. So, if you're here and wishing to address one of the items on the agenda, then the minute will open up the podium, you can step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. When the item comes up on the agenda, the only ones who will be allowed to speak at that time is the petitioner. So, just so, want everybody to know what, how the procedure works. So, if this time, if you wish to speak to an item that is on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Remember, there's a five-minute time limit per person.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Schrum, and I live at 1009 North Matthew Road. I thank you for the opportunity to express some concerns about the Sage Brier planned unit development that is on tonight's agenda. Last month, I sent a letter to each of you outlining my opposition to the approval of Sage Brier, and with it, I included pictures of flooding on my property from an area called Grub's Ditch. This flooding occurred at a time when Grub's Ditch is used only for agricultural runoff. And if Sage Brier is built, according to the current specifications, Grub's Ditch will be used to manage stormwater for that entire development. Although the subdivision will have detention ponds, which are a little more than grassy swells, the plan for those ponds is to outlet into Grub's Ditch. And so my concern is the potential effect on my property. I have attempted to search the city's database for any drainage studies that you have conducted prior to, or faulty, prior to approving this, and I can't find any if they exist. I would respectfully request that those be shared with the property owners who border Grub's Ditch. I'm asking that you delay your approval until sufficient studies can be done to determine the impact on the properties that border Grub's Ditch, or that you require modification to the design so that runoff is managed through sewer system and not directed into Grub's Ditch. My other concern is traffic and road improvements. The obvious feasibility report on Sage Brier contains reference to a traffic impact study that appears to indicate no road or intersection upgrades would need to be made. I'd like to point out that that traffic impact study and the decision was based, was conducted for one day during the month of February at the end of a pandemic when most people were still working from home. Additionally, since that study, you have approved a apartment complex of over five hundred units to be built on Five Points Road, which is the same road that Sage Brier will be built on. Those two developments will provide over one thousand new residential homes and will bring with it the corresponding traffic that goes with it for not only residents, but construction vehicles and service vehicles, visitors. I question how Five Points and the intersecting roads of Main Street and County Line can accommodate all the traffic for over a thousand new residences with no upgrades or changes. At the last meeting I attended, you asked for a show of hands of those in the room who live within the city limits. So it's clearly important to you, the council, where we live. I acknowledge I do not live in the city of Greenwood on one street over. So I'm unrepresented on this council in my opposition to this development. I have no voice because I have no vote for you. However, your decisions have an immense decision, have an immense effect on my daily life. I must drive through the city of Greenwood to get to my home.
Man, you have one minute.
So properly maintained roads and intersections are vital to my commute. My property lies one road from the city limits, so environmental modifications such as subdivisions can affect me. Your due diligence in your decision-making requires more than just looking at the financial aspects for the city of Greenwood. Your decisions have a much broader reach than just the residents of the city of Greenwood. And therefore, I believe you have a duty to consider the overall results of your actions and potential damage that may result. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And what else? Who should address the council at this time?
My name is John Hayes, right here representing the Hayes Family Farm LLC. We own three long forty acre farms that fled up against the proposed Sage Brier addition. We're here to voice our opposition to the plans that exist now. This situation that we have here is too far. First part is runoff coming from our immediate west of our property Sage Brier with, with the parallel north to south. The property line of the Hayes Family Farm LLC. And currently, we have a lot of runoff coming there, and we have damage to our fields and our property. We took a pacey, pretty hefty price to get this fixed up, get the drainage tunnels fixed. We're concerned about the drainage from the west coming down on our property. That's being worked on now, don't know what stage that's in. But the, the thing that I'm just going to speak to tonight is the fact that the plans that exist now, it shows dumping the runoff rainwater, stormwater, Grub's Ditch immediately to the north of Sage Brier. This ditch is classified as agricultural. It was built back before the Civil War. It's a real testament to the man and woman who built this. Those were our forefathers. They built this thing. I'll direct your attention to this linear graph. And the photographs just follow this linear graph. This thing was built at two point two five mile run all the way down the Redwood. And that's out, that's out by face corner of the Crossley Greenwood Road. If you look at this linear map, the green line represents the ditch that was constructed. There's only a forty-four foot drop in that ditch, two point two five miles. That represents a point three seven percent grade. Engineering handbook says that a one percent grade is really tricky and requires a lot of maintenance. Two percent grade is adequate. So here we are at about third percent grade. It worked up until about two thousand, and then we started to notice big problems. If you, if you look at this, the red line shows where there's flooding. The double red line shows where the flooding actually comes up over the county roads. It makes, makes roads impassable. This is not just a, just a big storm. This is normal rains. When we have a big storm, we have real problems down there. Takes a long time for the runoff. Problem with this ditch is, it's being, it's silted up. And the further east you go, more silted up it comes, and it shows you the, the distance from the top of the ditch where the crop land is to the bottom of the ditch. Starts out at Five Points at eight foot, takes up some velocity at ten foot, Bridge Number Two, Bridge Number Three. Then we get good, that's a big flooding in a normal rain on Bridge Number Four. And it continues on down across Frank Road. That western road down to Passon Hollow.
Sir, you have a little bit.
I think if you, if you take this graph and just tilt it slightly to the left and look at the green line. If the blue, then you look at the blue line, it'll show you that water's trying to fight to get down, get down to the Redwood creek. You can't make it. It's already silted up. It's already a problem. So what we're asking for is further studies. We're asking, we're asking for cooperation with us in making sure that this ditch is improved before we allow large amounts of stormwater and rainwater to be doing it. Needs to be reclassified. The mere act of reclassifying it to urban will not solve the problem. It needs to be
Sir, time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Lynette Morgan, and I'm also a part of the Hayes Family Farm LLC. Really appreciate you listening to our concerns tonight. I'm representing not only our family farm, but also many of the people in this room who have very valid concerns and are in opposition of ordinance 2223. I know it's extremely difficult for the city of Greenwood to balance growth with tax matters, infrastructure matters, services matters. But it's very important that you consider that this 2223 high-density building of five hundred nineteen homes at the PUD is not the best use of the leverage that it's being presented for. High-density development is not there are large lot homes and small communities. And you're going, they're, they're asking that you put this PUD in the center of farmland and large lot residential homes. We know that there's going to be building out there. We know there will be growth that directions. And if it's going to happen, we would ask that the city have some commitments that they would take so that there is not problem with flooding in Grub's Ditch. And it takes into consideration the actual amount of traffic that is being dumped onto those roads. So we would ask if you do pass this or do consider passing this, that Sage Brier, Sage Brier cooperate with the city and the county to be certain that all measures possible are taken to prevent flooding in Grub's Ditch. This issue is addressed in the Appendix A, page one of their Sage Fresh, Sage Brier PUD plan. But it's very cursory. It's two ones. So we would ask for a commitment that they will cooperate with the city and the county in getting the drainage corrected. They're going to use Grub's Ditch. Second, we would ask that Sage Brier install a drainage system that will control the volume, the speed and the velocity of the stormwater drainage from Sage Brier into Grub's Ditch to present and control flooding of the ditch and the neighboring properties. Third, we would ask for a commitment that Sage Brier create the herd on the eastern boundary of their development so that all the stormwater runs west rather than east onto the surrounding properties. Fourth, we would ask that Sage Brier PUD install a ditch or swale on the eastern boundary of their development so that stormwater runs away from the farm ground that is on the east side of their property line. Fifth, we would ask that Sage Brier drainage be designed so that no stormwater from the development flows east onto the surrounding property and also so that it does not flood Grub's Ditch. In order to address the traffic and safety concerns that this building would bring out, we would ask that Sage Brier make a commitment to do a new in-depth traffic study to be provided by them to address increased traffic problems, which are, will be created by the recent approval of the apartment complex that the former Greenwood Road in Five Points Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Other. Yeah, I'm a doctor of medicine in this area for forty-five years, and first of all, I would vehemently agree with the previous talks here. Just Schrum's talk was powerful, especially her idea of the way the decision here, the drainage issues are very, very likely. First line concern, as you know, is my runway flying privileges, but I look out my back door to the sound and, and after a good rain, Mr. Hayes' field floods to point eight or five to six, probably eighty, ten acres, just plus out. House will be up there in the morning stretch, and I wish you could come out and see it sometime. And the general slope, though, is west to east. It's okay to have a rated ditch, but the general slope is a, is a one direction. That's, that's a little bit hard to change. So I really agree with, with their family. My, my other point is my operation is the value, the value to the city and county. As you know, I fly aerobatics, World War II planes, and I donate time and, and to take rides for charities. People sell, we have plane rides for a hundred bucks, and I, of course, I do it for free. And the social leadership, Johnson County, churches, food pantries, and so forth. And I'm a, you know, I think I'm, I'm a vying community. The Daily Journal has written me up several times over the years. This is what I do, you know, and I'm not just a you know, a novice. What I do is I find a picture here, four generations of pilots, brothers, is a ex-national champion, so. So, I mean, I think that I am of value to the, to this, to the city and county. And we should keep that in mind, you know, which, you know, whatever happens to this. I'm asking, I'm asking somebody from Sage Brier to talk to me or my attorney, good faith, and guarantee my rights and right. And I appreciate the issues that you've already alluded to, since there's going to be two hundred fifty feet of space and lawsuit protection. And this, I don't know if this will happen, but we had to at least talk about that. And so I do appreciate that, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a fly a lot. No neighbor has ever complained about what I do. In fact, they all love it, and they bring their kids over for plane rides. It's, it's a positive to, to the county and the city. And I would like, I like to maintain that. In fact, if you kids start away from California, Florida, they have all their video games problems to deal with. So, you know, I am a positive to, to the county here. I also like a privacy fence for, for everyone's protection, you know, people, my house is right on the line. And way back at my office, it's right on the line, and it's right there. So anyway, I would really appreciate here someone with about my rights. I'd be able to talk to anybody face to face, but point is, please, I'm being very concerned and research it unbelievably well. And I say, and I totally agree with them, and also I think I add extra value to the city and the county. So please hear, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Robertson, Dr. Robertson, could you give us your address, please?
904 North Matthews Road.
Alright, thank you. We have about two and a half minutes left of the twenty minutes.
Well, my time is short, so keep brief. I'm Eric Miller, 3033 East Bang Street, Greenwood, Indiana. Represent the East of Sixty-five Property Owners Association. Our main, our main complaint about this development is the density. We think that the extremely small lots are crowding together in the houses. It's not going to be something that we will be proud of for this. But we'll tell you that they small lots will be appreciated by their elderly residents. First off, these are fully maintained communities, so there aren't going to be old guys like me out there mowing grass. And I don't know, I guess probably have never thought about, gee, I'm wasting neighbors with closer to me than they are so I can hear their PPD and listen to their arguments. I mean, this is we're talking six foot side yards here. Twelve feet between the houses. We're talking, what, fifteen foot backyards. Measure that, fifteen feet backyards. Your minimum zoning requirements are twenty-five. Twenty-foot front yards, lot width of forty-six foot. Your minimum zoning requirements are fifty-five. So, it's just two packed together. We should ask for more. We should ask for better. You've done that. You've said no vinyl siding, no aluminum siding. You've improved all additions when you threw that. Let's ask for bigger lots. Let's get close, get on into our zoning, which is one of the sectors. And finally, your own ordinance, your own zoning ordinance set up, the PUD shall not be used to circumvent the requirements of your zoning ordinance, ordinance, those that I mentioned. Isn't that exactly what they're doing here? Because of bringing 500 houses or staying paid. We don't have to conform. We can put in these small lots and you improve it. Well, I hope not. So let's keep Greenwood a better place. Let's set the tone for the development of the east side. Thank you.
Right. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the council concerning a, a different item on tonight's agenda?
Budget. Dale Morgan, 1153 Hilton Drive. I'd like to talk about the budget for a second. I find that the city employees are very important. Inflation is high. You recall that in the seventies, we had the gas go from 30 cents to 45 cents. Given this 18% inflation generally, it's going to be just as bad. And I think that you should give the employees our most valuable asset of the city more than that initial amount. It's very important to keep quality people. You can't do that if you pay them dirt. Public safety is also very important. And I find the reasoning to not increase public police department is that I just don't have time to train anybody to be very weak. I can buy talent in any job I want. Buying people with experience should be worth quite a bit. And add some new dimensions. It's been a tough year for our police department. The suicide, the $2 million paid for the person who had his head bounced on the concrete and was handcuffed, but loaded with a gurney. We had another person who was shot in the back nine times, something like that. Lawsuits that are very expensive to the city. I think that find some talent and try to people would help. And I think some of the areas where you can get that are relatively easy to funding for. They're buying 16 Ford explorers. You can save money by buying Dodge Chargers. I agree that Ford explorers are better, but you gotta do something like that. Community development wants $200,000 to make a new community plan. And of course, all these people here say, oh, they're just going to ignore that. They're just going to document our lies. And so maybe that $200,000 could go for training, external training for the police to, you know, to take care of some of these issues to maybe save another life or maybe save another horrible lawsuit and bad results. So I ask that you reject it, that you make amendments to the budget and that you do things that help the city improve. Can you imagine that budget can be changed? And I hope that you'll consider it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? All right. Hearing none. Moving on, ordinance resolutions. We are, all right, notice we tend to consider ordinance number 2223.
And ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference and unified development ordinance number 2029. Proposed rezoning approximately 185.97 acres located on the east side of Five Points Road, one half mile south of county line, where Bates, Campbell, Foster, Hill, Hopper, Gibson and Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Lexi's second. Mr. Hopper. All right. It's yours.
Hi, Council. Yeah, Dave Nelson, the planning division. Staff recommends a favorable recommendation of this petition, as did plant commission with the non conditions listed in the staff report. This is the first development in the recently voluntarily annexed area to the east of Greenwood. So this really should set the stage for development to come in the future. This is a good candidate for that. The PUD is a zone map change from A to a planned unit development. Planned unit development is kind of a unique zoning where the land is actually a part of the public zone. So staff has thoroughly reviewed the ordinance, the concept plan, as well as some feasibility reports that they've done. The purpose of this PUD is for a 55-plus community. This community will also have 25% open space, which does include some pocket parks and amenities for the residents that would be living there. Feel like I should speak towards some of the comments that you did receive. This will still need to go through the client process as well as the master plan and the site development plan. So this is in no way a stamp of approval for the drainage. It will need to go through our process and our review. This project should improve the drainage issues that they're experiencing out there is not permissible to discharge water off the property onto your neighbors. And they will be adding things like detention ponds. That should help the situation that they're having in the area. I saw some of the photos of flooding. Aside from that, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions for the petitioner here?
I did not see the petitioner here today.
Okay, you said that the drainage plan has not been approved in this current plan?
No, we just had some feasibility reports just kind of show a concept of what their plan is to make sure that it kind of makes sense. But this would have to go through our primary plaque we also have outside review that would look at the drainage. So drainage would be thoroughly reviewed and approved in this area. Currently, there is no detention or water quality or quality on this property. That is something that is still to come in the process. They were somewhat early on during the concept plan phase. And...
I read the cheese. I don't know. The cheese is actually a real cheese. But I just put it on the mouse and it's both for...
Mr. Here. Thank you.
Yep. So there's a couple of different approvals here. The master plan staff will review that. They will go back to plant commission for the final master plan approval. This is something that plant commission did not grant staff if there was an option for that. So they will go back to plant commission. But I will ultimately issue, yes, or issue the land alteration permit that will come after the master plan is approved. The permit is not allowed to be released until after the master plan. So there's a couple of different approvals here with the unique case of a planned unit development where your ordinance and the site plan will be looked at one more time with the master plan. And that kind of runs concurrently with the site plan for the development.
And the feasibility study obviously was not made present to rest the review for their issues that match kind of what the constituents here are saying?
The feasibility was attached in the report that you received. It was kind of a long one. There were 75 pages, but it was nested in there with a very detailed concept plan. This is typically more than you see before a plaque. And that's because of the, the unique character of a planned unit development. There are some pages. I'm not sure the exact page, but it is there. There, yeah. Like I said, that is just a feasibility study. We will actually be reviewing and sending it outside review.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, do you, I know that you, we've all seen the pictures of the water issues that they've had out there. Do you feel like that once the final drainage plans are put together, that their issues will be better? Or I know we're not supposed to give them more water at a faster rate.
It will definitely be better than the current conditions that they have. I, I'm not sure what all is contributing to their issues. This is only one. A site is, you know, 185 acres. So if it is a large area, what the 185 acres, really 86 acres, will be an improvement on the current conditions with the water quality and quality.
And if they've had maybe field tile that has failed in the fields at different places, then the development will be redesigning all of that and the detention ponds and all, right?
As part of their drainage report calculation, so they'll have to show that they're not discharging off the property and that they are retaining a certain amount of water per acre. Seriously, the discharge rate that we have, they'll have to comply by that like any development that will come to the city of Greenwood. The site does have approval and shown for detection ponds. Apparently, there are no detection ponds there. It would just be the drainage tiles that they have with drug ditch.
So once the drainage is addressed, let's say that they've got, I don't see their layout. I was looking to see if I had the map from the planning condition. But if there isn't enough area, then they would have to redesign those and they would have to be made larger, right?
Correct. They, they will need to adjust the size of them. If they can't, can't hold the capacity, they would need to reconfigure, readjust. The feasibility was really just to show that what they are proposing is possible and can work. And obviously, the developer is going to want to do their research as well because they want to make sure their proposed project works and works with the city of Greenwood. So it's in your best interest to do things to our standards so they don't run into delays and reconfigure. So a lot of them do do research ahead of time to make sure that their, their site will be able to accommodate the amount of impervious surface that they're placing on it.
Okay. And my last question. Is part of their development also that they have to improve Five Points Road along their property line?
Yes, they, they would have to improve Five Points Road. I believe it is one of the nine commands. My iPad is not quite working for me right now.
I was trying to find those, but I wasn't having a lot of...
I'll jump to them. Then I can read them for you.
Five Points Road shall be constructed to county road option one along the entire velvet frontage. That is a commitment number three. So would you be calling it?
Any other questions on the council?
I don't know that I have any questions so much. It's just, I want to hear from the petitioner. I want to know why this piece of property. I want to know why a PUD. I want them to show some elevations beyond what's in that packet that they've hinted at. I want them to talk to these fine folks and say, we're going to fix, make sure the drainage tissues aren't going to run off into your property.
And take care of the pilot.
Take care of the pilot. I want to hear from that. It's pretty upsetting if they're not here. So it sounds like a push moment. I'd make that motion if somebody said...
I'll send it to the next meeting or... I'll be postponed to...
Right, we have motion to postpone ordinance 2223 to our next meeting, which would be October the 17th. And a second by most, Mr. Hopper, a second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the motion to postpone ordinance 2223?
I would say this wasn't a surprise. We've been talking about this thing since August. It should be here. I don't know if we deserve to give them a postpone. It's important to them. They should be here.
You know the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
I believe the ayes carry. They, all right, two nays. Motion, ordinance 22, motion to, slow ordinance 2223 to our October 17th meeting has passed on a vote of 72.
All your concerns are duly noted. If you don't want to come back and speak again, at least they're noted in my mind.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You all are, of course, welcome to stay, but if you choose not to, please exit quietly, please. We have other business. All right, first reading, ordinance number 2226.
And ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2023 budget year sponsored by Bates, Foster and Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Lexi's second, second on Ms. Gibson. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against. Ordinance 2226, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing none. Public hearing. Any discussion on the council ordinance 2226? No, they can speak that. Yeah. If you're online, whisper. Well, not now. Any discussion on the council?
I've just got something really quick, Mr. President.
Go.
Through the meet and confer, there were about eight items that were brought forward. Thank, thanks mostly to the, the edit tax. About two of those made their way into the budget. It might fall more into the salaries, but I mean, we talk about things like longevity pay. That goes into account and will not be the highest paid in the county because of longevity pay. One, if you don't have that in account. There's reasons I have for not supporting this, but talking to police and firefighters, this is more than they usually get. So for that reason, I'm going to support it, but I think we have a long way to go. I think there's other things like mileage caps on police officers and different things that they requested this year that if we're really going to look out for them, it needs to be stuff like that. It's not just salaries. It's not just six police or six firefighters.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from council questions? Hearing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2226, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penalton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2226 passes. First reading, 90. Ordinance 2227.
And ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Greenwood, Indiana and city utilities for the year 2023 sponsored by Bates, Foster and Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Ms. Gibson's second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Comments? Hearing none, then roll call. Ordinance 2228, first reading.
Foster.
Aye. I'm sorry. That's my fault. It should be ordinance 2227, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penalton.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-seven, I'm sorry. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-seven passes, first reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-eight.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-three sponsored by Bates, Foster and Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second, Foster.
I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Foster, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Here in the end, roll call, ordinance twenty-two, twenty-eight.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penelope.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-eight passes, first reading eight zero. Ordinance, I'm sorry, eight one. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-nine.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the city judge of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-three sponsored by Bates, Foster and Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
By Mr. Foster. Any discussion on the council? Here in the end, roll call, ordinance twenty-two, twenty-nine, first reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penelope.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-nine passes, first reading eight one. Ordinance twenty-two, thirty.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the common council, the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-three sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Foster, second.
Certainly.
By Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Here in the end, roll call, ordinance twenty-two, thirty, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penelope.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. And Hill.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, thirty passes, first reading eight one. Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-one.
And ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city of Greenwood, Indiana for the year twenty-twenty-three sponsored by Bates, Foster and Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
By Mr. Foster. Any discussion? Here in the end, roll call, first reading, ordinance twenty-two, thirty-one.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penelope.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-one passes, first reading eight one. Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-two.
And ordinance of the city of Greenwood, Indiana authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain expenditures, driven sidewalk projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith. And on account of the issuance of the bonds, appropriated the proceeds thereof and all matters related there too sponsored by Bates and Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the council? Here in the end, roll call, ordinance twenty-two, thirty-two, first reading.
Penelope.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Alex.
Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-two passes, first reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three.
And ordinance provided for an additional appropriation from the aviation fund budget classification two-two-two, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars sponsored by Bates and Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Certainly.
Second by Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. If you're here tonight, wish to speak for or against ordinance number twenty-two, thirty-three, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And if you're online, wish to speak, please speak up. Give us your name and address. Here none? Close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Here in the end, roll call, ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three, first reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Penelope.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three passes, first reading nine zero.
Mr. Campbell, I'd like to ask the airport manager, Rick, are you okay money-wise or do we need to try and take this through second reading? Okay, certainly.
I have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three through second reading. Do you have a second?
Certainly.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on suspension of the rules through second reading? Here in the end, roll call and suspension of the rules through second reading, ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penelope.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through second reading and a vote of nine to zero. Do you have a motion on second reading?
Certainly.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is simply just transferring one.
It's an additional appropriation.
But what we're doing, Ron, is buying fuel, so then it comes back.
Okay. Fresh.
I think with the price of fuel, we just expect more this year.
All right, any other discussion? Here in the end, roll call, ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three, second reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Penelope.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, thirty-three passes, second reading nine zero. Ordinance number twenty-two, thirty-four. I'm sorry. Ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-one.
Resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolutions.
Twenty-one, a resolution agreement common council to petition for appeal relief of property tax levy limitation sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, the second, by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council?
I have something really quick, Mr. President.
Yes.
No, I'm reading through the resolution and reading that, you know, the purpose kind of behind this is because population has expanded at such a rate that public safety and things like that haven't really been able to keep up. And this would allow to kind of bridge that gap. I look at this and then I look at ordinance twenty-two, twenty-three that we started the night at and adding five hundred more units. That, that's how we got here. Like, that's part of the reason that we got here is because we keep rezoning, natty residential where it's not so. And so, I mean, I'll support it. That's how we're going to get more police and firefighters, but I feel like that's a self-inflicted wound that we've created there.
All right. Any other comments? Here in the end, roll call, resolution twenty-two, twenty-one, first reading.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
And Campbell.
All right, resolution twenty-two, twenty-one passes, first reading nine zero. We walked on resolution twenty-two, twenty-six. And that is, we passed sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We are scheduled for two resolutions. Resolution number for public hearing, resolution twenty-two, twenty-two.
A resolution agreement common council terminating property tax abatement for real property improvements and market RC Indy N three LLC eleven fifty-one South Frank Road sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do you have a motion? Most, Mr. Hopper, second.
Certainly.
By Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. If you are here and wish to speak for or against resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. My name is David Webb. I actually come here from Boston, Massachusetts. I am the director of our industrial portfolio for Industrial Logistics Property Trust. That is the owner for this property here in Greenwood. First of all, I want to apologize if we're even here discussing this matter this evening to kind of give you some backstory into what's going on and how we are to this point. We were made aware of a news article on last Thursday, the twenty-eighth, that this was pending, this was coming up. Upon investigation, talking to our tenant, both Amazon and the internal records, we found out that Amazon incorrectly filed a request for review of the tax here of this property, which resulted in one of the two issues that we're here facing up tonight. One being that the request to appeal, which is against the original resolution. And then the second issue is the failure of filing form CF one. The CF one does fall on the landlord. So, back here through with that, the company, Industrial Logistics Property Trust, actually purchased, or I'm sorry, not purchased, they merged with the company that originally owned this property back on February twenty-eighth. As part of the merger, of course, if you guys have ever been to a merger or acquisition, mergers unfortunately don't give all the information as you would as you actually acquired the property and purchased it or what else property, due diligence is a little bit more. So, unfortunately, this fell through the cracks. Now, we've already talked to our tax department with our company and I have, I've seen the property manager here as well. We do have this on our radar moving forward. So, if you guys do grant this to continue moving forward, we are prepared to file CF one for. I also have an email from Amazon that they acknowledge they were state and they're ready to request the removal of the review immediately. So, I asked for the, Mr. President, council members, to please consider that and to allow us to continue with this taxing at this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against resolution twenty-two, twenty-two? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Anyone on staff have any information for us?
So, it says they filed an appeal. Was it granted?
Well, what's interesting is Amazon, it's the tenant, they have a personal property tax abatement. They are up to date on their personal property CF forms. So, I don't know what the nature of the review was that they filed. Flanks, it was apparently a mistake. We do not have a CF one for this year. So, if you decide not to terminate it, you can go forward, but they aren't in compliance for this year, so they probably would not get the deductions for this year. There would have to be like a waiver of non-compliance to allow them to file it late. So, I do not know what the rule of the council is, but that's kind of where they are with this.
Because I would want to know. Our memo says the deduction was twenty-five million in A B or seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in real estate taxes. That's not an insignificant amount. If that's already happened, I would vote no. If it hasn't happened, they can withdraw it. Then it's my understanding that they filed, but it has been withdrawn and.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Can, can you hear me? This is Adam Stone?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I wanted to address from, from the committee's perspective, there's, there's two aspects that we want to clarify. One is we, we did get confirmation from the assessor's office this morning that the, the real property appeal has been effectively rescinded or is no longer a, a valid, valid appeal request on the real property. We did get confirmation of that. And then, secondly, we have, we have not, we did not receive a CF one or compliance statement on the real property CF one by the deadline. So, any, that, the pay twenty-three deduction right now is not valid but for a waiver of non-compliance issued by, by the council.
All right. Okay. All right, so when were you made aware that you needed a CF one, Russ?
September twenty-eighth, last Thursday, when we received the news article.
And when can you have it done?
I have it right here already signed about CF one. Need to resolution, you do a waiver of non-compliance.
I'm just worried about this.
Yeah, if you're going to allow them to file it late.
All right, so presumably, we just need to vote no for this one if we're going to allow them to file.
You have a motion set on the floor, so take a vote call and terminate, don't terminate it. That's what you do not want it.
Okay. So, does this clarify, no vote would allow them to file?
Mr. Foster, Joe.
Yes.
Not without us doing an additional resolution to waive the no compliance.
But if we vote yes on this, then.
Then they're terminating the tax payment and it would not be.
But it's only on the agenda for a public hearing, not a yay or a main vote.
Well, it's a one-off thing because it's tax abatement resolution, so you don't do the normal pre-meeting process.
Just, just for clarification, if we want to allow them to, to move forward, then we need to vote down resolution twenty-two, twenty-two and then have a resolution granting them
a waiver of non-compliance.
Maybe I want to look at the CF one first.
Would that be available or next meeting? Okay, and so, that, that's, or if you want to terminate the tax abatement, then you would vote yes on resolution twenty-two, twenty-two. All right, any questions?
We need to see a one before we vote. Well, I mean, they can still file a CF one if we can vote no at that time, but sure. Go ahead, bring it up here.
I have a second copy if you'd like to take copies. Why don't you just read that?
Estimated employees on SB one is twelve-hundred-and-fifty, actuals three-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-five. Salaries committed thirty-eight million, actuals one-hundred.
Exceeding. All right. Any questions on the council?
I was just going to comment.
Yes.
I think that as a city, we want to try to be pro-business. I think we all agree so. In some cases, give it down. So, I'm with you on this.
Okay.
No.
I think they've taken that away by having the CF one.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, all right, before we vote then, if we want to allow them to move forward, we need to vote down resolution twenty-two, twenty-two. And then at the next meeting, there'll be a waiver of compliance motion for us to vote on at that point. All right, any questions? All right, resolution, roll call, resolution twenty-two, twenty-two.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Nay.
Hopper.
Nay.
Lexi.
Nay.
Penelope.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Nay.
And Foster.
Nay.
Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two fails to pass on a vote of zero to nine. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. All right, resolution twenty-two, twenty-three.
A resolution agreement common council terminating the property tax abatement for personal property Arbonne International LLC, eight-hundred Commerce Parkway West Drive sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi, sorry, Mr. Foster. This is scheduled for a public hearing. For a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, President Campbell, council members. My name is Jeff Strummer, I'm with the law firm Taff. I'm here representing Arbonne tonight. I've got several members of Arbonne who will be tonight, Bernard Shallow, their general counsel, Gisella Rivera, her airport tax compliance manager, and Fresh Ali, the tax manager, so they're all on. But I've got some specific questions for them. And I'm just up here to say that at this point, Arbonne believes we have a positive relationship with the city of Greenwood and Johnson County generally. Arbonne intends to continue to invest in this community. And we're heavily invested in this long-term success. Recently, for example, September eleventh. And we're heavily invested in this long-term success. Recently, for example, by September eleventh, Arbonne instituted and across the board pay increases for employees in Greenwood worksite, that averaged about eighty percent across the board on these raises. Turning to the abatement, Arbonne believes to apply to the abatement, we've faithfully submitted CF1s. As we're required to do, we also understood the original payment expired in two thousand sixteen. At this point, Arbonne does not object to ending the abatement. Frankly, it's aligned with the city. The abatement is no longer needed. Arbonne looks forward to continue following the position of the city. So that's all I've got to say here. She also has questions for me or for the representatives on this.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
What was your comment about the CF1?
Well, we've been submitting CF1s basically year after year. Despite which is fully compliant with the closing of all the facts kind of related to the abatement as required.
All right, any other questions?
I, I guess my question is. Yeah, it, it says there hasn't been one from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two.
I have got the ones that were submitted here from file.
I do not believe those are submitted to the city because the designated body has to act on those. And we don't have a record that the city actually acted on those and signed up on them. That is, or asking or directly filed with the county, but they didn't go through the common council for approval.
Yeah, they, they were filed with, well, one of them was filed with my county, but I'm not sure why they didn't make two views. They were submitted.
So if I heard you correctly, you said you don't care if we have this payment.
Yeah, we were not objecting to the resolution.
Do you know if you've got the abatement for years, you followed it, didn't follow it with us, you know, okay?
Yes, I, I believe we did.
So they got it anyway.
All right.
That's not how it's supposed to work.
All right, I believe, I appreciate you being here. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
We thank you.
Right, anyone else wishing to speak for or against Resolution twenty-two twenty-three, either here or online? Close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Stone.
All right, Mr. Stone, do you have any comments?
No, not, not really. I just want to appreciate, you know, Arbonne for, for communicating with us. I appreciate their cooperation at this point, and I'm happy to answer any council questions, but nothing, nothing to add.
All right, thank you.
I guess my only comment would be, you know, if they didn't come down, sort of, well, how do we fix that in the future? What it happened again? Wherever the ball was dropped.
So it goes to the council. But kind of, but those two, it's not become here, it's somewhere else. So.
We will explore to see if there's something that should be done or prevent that from happening again on a tax abatement.
It's apparently the cycle we have here.
I, I think that.
Or, I mean, we need a check somewhere that says, hey, we have it received since.
I think we have a, a committee in place that reviews these, and that's how we caught this, and I think that's part of what their responsibilities are to make sure these things still fall through the crack as they have in the past. Any other discussion? And hearing none, then it's my understanding, based on what was said tonight and information I've received, that Arbonne does not object to ending the abatement at this point. And appreciates the, the relationship it has with the city, and we appreciate what they've done. Any other discussion?
Procedurally, we'll vote yes on this.
To end it, to any, if you choose to end the abatement, yes, then we would vote yes on Resolution twenty-two twenty-three.
I guess my other question would be just more of an Arbonne question. The drops in employees, is it automation? Is it less business? What is, what's happening? That may not be a you question, and maybe somebody online question, but it's just out of curiosity, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a direct answer to the, the question. I've got a general idea, so if somebody wants to answer that before I, otherwise I can kind of, I can give you my, my general understanding, but.
Doesn't look like they're going to say.
Yeah.
If there's anyone online who'd like to answer that question, please feel free to speak up.
If, if the council can hear me, this is Bertadette Trola, the CLO at Arbonne here in Irvine, California. Thank you to the City Council and to Greenwood. The, the answer to the question is a combination of both. We originally began investing before the Great Recession in two thousand six, and that forced us to pivot and change plans. But since then, we are continuing our relationship and look forward to a long relationship with the city. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on the council? All right, thank you. All right. Roll call, Resolution twenty-two twenty-three.
Hill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
All right.
Middleton? Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
I.
And Gibson?
I.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-three passes and go to nine to zero. Thank you. New business introduction, a new ordinance, it's a resolutions, we moved resolution, walked on Resolution twenty-two twenty-six and put it in the front of this list. Resolution twenty-two twenty-six corrects some mistakes that were made in Resolution twenty-two twenty. I'll let the school read them.
A resolution, amended Resolution number twenty-two twenty, and Resolution recognizing Reverend David Mark on his years of service to correct type of errors. We suspended rules to do that. Resolution last time, after that, we discovered that his name was incorrect in a few places. And also the Franklin Senior Life Community, the honor buying, like additional we left its office. I apologize for that. This will correct that and also directs the president to sign amended twenty-two twenty.
Motion is in order?
It would be in order to suspend the rules to get this done. So motion, Mr. Bates, to suspend rules through first reading, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension? And then the roll call on suspension of rules through first reading, Resolution twenty-two twenty-six.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson?
I.
And Bill.
Rules are suspended through first reading. Do you have a motion or first reading?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? And then in roll call, Resolution twenty-two twenty-six for three.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
And Hopper.
All right. Resolution twenty-two twenty-six passes first reading, nine to zero. Most of our suspension through secondary. Motion by Mr. Lexi, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? And then in roll call, suspension of rules through second reading, Resolution twenty-two twenty-six.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
And Lexi.
Rules are suspended on a vote of nine to zero. A motion on second reading. Those Mr. Hopper, second.
So.
By Mr. Bates. Any discussion? And then in roll call, Resolution twenty-two twenty-five, second reading, or twenty-two twenty-six, second reading.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson? Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-six passes second reading, nine to zero. Thank you. Ordinance twenty-two thirty-five.
And it's providing for an additional appropriation for the American Rescue Plan for Road to Vipers Local fiscal recovery fund to budget classification four three nine, one million dollars for security grants to local public space systems operated within the City of Greenwood, sponsored by Bates, Campbell, Foster, Gibson, and Hopper.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, Council members, thank you for your time. As I've been talking with the Controller, with the deputy mayor, Mr. Stone, about our Arbonne funds over the past, over this last year, with what happened with the Uvalde campus issue and with other schools around the nation. I asked him if we had money available, what are the funds that we could give to the schools? It's down a million dollars, and we'd like to divide three ways between Greenwood School System, the Clark Pleasant School System, and the Centennial School System to pay for hard cost security elements, not soft costs such as salaries, but actual hard costs that will help stop perpetrators from getting inside the schools or to help identify people that should not be coming in on school properties. I've talked with the superintendent of Greenwood and Clark Pleasant. I have not called Dr. Arpanoff yet. I'm sure he's been coming up with three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars for expenses as well. I think it's something very good for community, for school systems, for all the children that reside in Greenwood. Ask the school for the council for that.
So it's just a straight third, third, third to each one, not based on number of students or number of buildings or?
Correct. And then they'll have to bring to us what those costs are going to be used for, and then a little fervor to make sure they're hard cost.
Any other questions from the mayor?
That was the question I was going to ask. It could be a four dollar or it's just a straight one-third. So thanks.
And it's reimbursed, so they have to actually spend the money, then they bring the invoice, and then money is reimbursed.
There is a request for suspension of rules through first reading, so I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Ms. Gibson makes the motion, start with, Mr. Lexi seconds that. Any discussion on suspension? And then in roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance twenty-two thirty-five.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson? Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
And Williams?
Hi.
Rules are suspended through first reading, ordinance twenty-two thirty-five, on a vote of nine to zero. A motion on first reading. Motion of Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing on the roll call, ordinance twenty-two thirty-five, first reading.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson? Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
And Bates?
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-two thirty-five passes first reading, nine to zero.
Mr. President, I know that this just says we need to take it through the suspension of the rules through first reading. But our children are so important to us.
It's scheduled for public hearing.
We have that here.
It's not over yet. Never mind, I'm sorry.
Ordinance twenty-two thirty-six.
And ordinance transferring funds has been the Parks Fund for the Parks and Recreation Department for budget categories four four four, one hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars, and four four nine, thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars to budget category four three nine, sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, so this is just transferred funds within the Parks budgets. They had some repairs and maintenance costs this year that were unanticipated to the growth of the community center. And then, like everybody else, their utilities have been higher than anticipated. So what they would like to do is some of their capital projects will be put off for this year, and those funds then be re reset to category four three nine, which is services charged to cover repair, maintenance, and then also the utility. They are asked to be suspended through second reading if you would be able to do that so that we can process some bills that have come out.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right, you have a motion to suspend the rules through first reading. Motion of Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
And Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension? And then, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-two thirty-six, suspension of the rules through first reading.
Foster?
Gibson?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
And Campbell?
All right. Rules are suspended through first reading, vote of nine to zero. A motion on first reading. By the motion of Ms. Gibson, second. And Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-two thirty-six, first reading.
Gibson?
Um.
Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Hi.
Rules are suspended through second reading, vote of nine to zero. A motion on second reading. Most of Mr. Lexi, second. Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? And then in roll call, ordinance twenty-two thirty-six, second reading.
Bill?
Hi.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Hi.
And Gibson?
I.
Stop the motion to suspend rules for second reading, and then we did second reading, but you just did rule suspension for first reading and then first reading. I believe that was a motion to suspend the rules for second reading. Those are all lies, so now we need a motion for standing.
So.
Second.
Okay. I think unless I missed a check mark two and she missed a check. What does the clerk have?
All right. So we have a motion by Ms. Gibson, a second by Mr. Hopper.
I can answer how.
That's fine.
All right, we have a motion to the second, on second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-two thirty-six, second reading.
Hopper?
Hi.
Lexi?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Bates?
Hi.
Campbell?
Hi.
Foster?
Hi.
Gibson?
I.
Ordinance twenty-two thirty-six passes second reading, nine to zero. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Resolution twenty-two twenty-four.
And Resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Greenwood and the Consolidated City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana, regarding certain road improvements to West County Line Road and to Emerson Avenue, sponsored by Campbell, Foster, and Gibson.
Good evening, Mark St. John, City Engineer. For central local, covers two projects between, well, being performed by the City of Indianapolis. It covers the responsibilities, the delegated responsibilities for the design, construction, ownership of these two projects between the City of Indianapolis and the City of Greenwood. The first project is the City of Indianapolis intends to widen County Line Road from State Route thirty-seven, which will have a new change, and I sixty-nine goes through all the way to State Route one thirty-five, through a section of County Line Road just west of State Route Route one thirty-five, this is the City of Greenwood. It covers part of that project. The second project is a sidewalk improvement project along Emerson Avenue, just south of County Line. City of Indianapolis will be extending sidewalks south on Emerson Avenue, on the east side of Emerson Avenue. The first project, the widening of County Line Road, also includes a cost share. City of Indianapolis is asking for the City of Greenwood to contribute one hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars for that project.
All right, any questions?
I bore everything to do with this.
I bore the Realtor organization.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Resolution twenty-two twenty-five.
A resolution, seven holidays for employees of the City of Greenwood for the year twenty twenty-three, sponsored by Campbell, Foster, and Gibson.
Right, miscellaneous business, public comments. This is the second opportunity we allow, invite members of the public to address that council.
Can I go back to the holiday ones?
Yeah.
So Friday, December twenty-second, Monday, December twenty-fifth. If it were me, I'd rather have Monday, Tuesday off of that week as opposed to, I mean, it's all four-day weekends, so I guess. But the day after Christmas. But the day after Christmas.
It's a short week, because in the end of the week, you're getting the New Year's holiday.
Yeah, so I was thinking, I wouldn't even want that day off, because New Year's Eve actually draws on what it's going to be. 31st would be Sunday, and then New Year's is a Monday. I would try, I would put that holiday somewhere else. Anyway, that's just my two cents.
What a good state.
Yeah. I'm trying to maximize their time off and not make it feel like it was just a random day in December that they're getting off.
Thank you for refusing.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. May I?
Are you in charge?
Oh, really? I'm not sure.
All right, miscellaneous business, public comments, this is the second opportunity, members of the audience, to address the councils concerning items, this time items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up. Anyone? All right, moving on, other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council. Uh, let's back up a second. Anything from the council? I know. I'll be back.
I guess we do have the CF1 from the Amazon property that's been filed with the council this evening.
Yeah.
So I'll give this to Sean.
Okay. Any other, anything else from the council? All right, Corporation Council. Controller? Mayor?
Oh, check your website for trigger training.
Yes. Yes.
Evening, Mr. President, I want to address the council, two different issues. Number one, last night, I was able to attend the training scenario with the Greenwood Fire Department, White River Fire Department, Indianapolis Fire Department, Greenwood Park Hall, on the simulation of an explosion with injuries in the mall. Got a hand or two, all the fire departments, amazing job we did on the training for that. Again, that goes back to show that we are doing everything we can to keep the mall as safe as possible. That goes back to the joint training we did in the past with police departments and multiple police agents. What a great job they've done under Chief Eisen, so I commend them all for that. Secondly, I would be remiss not mentioning this. Council Pendleton, once again, did bring up police and fire and public safety. You volunteered to be on the meet and confer committee. You were invited to meet and confer committee meetings with myself, the controller, the deputy mayor, a couple of staff members, along with councillor Lexi and Hopper. You were the first to decline. Yet you have the audacity to sit up there as a council member and want to criticize something you have absolutely no idea what you're talking about. If you want to be on committee, show up. All of us have the opportunity to show up. You refuse to show up. And yet you want to sit here and criticize the budget that's been put together. You want to come up with numbers that don't work for the city of Greenwood, and you want to present things that are not possible. So if you want to be a part of the committee, be a part of that committee. If you want to be a part of this council, be a part of this council. Be a part of the solution, stop being the problem.
Mr. Mayor, respectfully, and no offense to my other meeting confer members, but do you know how many meetings I was in? All three of us were in with our police and fire records, all three of us, at one time.
And did you work them in with?
No, not, do you know how many times?
No.
Zero.
Great job.
No, it's not a great job, that's really sad, because we volunteered to do it, and we couldn't even show up for them. We scheduled a meeting with them, no call, no shows, and that's disrespectful. So I understand that I didn't show up to a meeting at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, sorry that didn't work for my schedule. But you know what I did, I showed up at the time I said I would for our police and firefighters. And I listened to them, and I followed what they said they needed, and I signed off on the MOU, I handed it off to the other members. And where it went from there, you're right, I wasn't at that meeting.
Where did it go from there? Did you present it publicly to council, to ask to be adopted?
It was passed around to council, everybody got that.
Did you present it publicly to be adopted?